Good afternoon, neighbors. We are here for our second installment today of our interviews for Election 2025. I'm June Margolin from Huntington Matters. Behind the camera is Dana Richter, our Vice President, and in the next room is Diane Schaber, producer monitoring the feed. We are very excited to bring to you today Mr. Greg Grisopoulos, who is running for Huntington Town Council.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, thank you for coming. We're going to dive right in.
It's great to be back.
Yeah, this is great. We did talk during the primary and it was a great interview. So tell us about yourself and why you decided to step forward to serve our community as Town Councilperson.
So, you know, during COVID, you know, everybody was home and my family actually had a bit of a health issue. My son at the time had been diagnosed with cancer at six years old. Yeah. I don't know, and not a lot of people know that.
You dropped a little nugget last night.
Uh, yeah, I don't sometimes, I don't always talk about it because sometimes I get a little emotional about it. But, you know, so he's four and a half years clean and he's doing great. Ski's black diamonds, math is off the charts. He's worked a table at my fundraiser a couple nights ago. But, you know, for me, the community was so awesome with our family and it was so important for me to try to figure out, how can I, how can I do something to kind of give back to the community? And I had always thought that I would run for office. I'd always figured I would do something, but I really wanted to make a difference and I couldn't quite figure out exactly what that spot would be. And then when Melville became one of the big topics of the area and redeveloping essentially my neighborhood, because that's where I live with my wife and my three kids and Nicholas being my middle guy. I really, at that point, figured this is a great opportunity for me to get involved. It's local community stuff where I think you can make sometimes the biggest and most immediate difference in somebody's life and their community. And the community was so great to us that Melville, Half Hollow Hills community was so supportive of us during that time. So it was a great opportunity, one, to give back to the community and two, at the same time, to really make sure that that Melville gets done the right way, that's consistent with what the neighborhood wants and protects our property values and our schools where my kids go to school. So.
I cannot even think of the last candidate that lived in Melville.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know that we've had a senior town board person in 11 years since I've been paying attention.
You definitely had one from Dix Hills.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, after Susan was gone, was gone and she moved on to the county legislature, there hasn't been anybody from the Melville Dix Hills area. And really, I'm happy to say that I'm the only candidate from the Melville Dix Hills area. Now, five people are going to sit on a town board and make decisions about Melville on such a large scale and deciding what we're going to do with the community and what best helps the community, what best, you know, what best fits in that project. Somebody in one of those five seats should be from Melville and have, you know, own property there and have kids who go to the school district. So, you know, background wise, obviously my wife and I, you know, I grew up in Fort Solanga. We chose to live in Melville. We chose to live in the town of Huntington. We love the town of Huntington. It has so many great things to offer, you know, between some of the best parks and the best beaches. And listen, we don't, we don't have oceanfront, but the bay and, you know, being on the North Shore, I think is beautiful. And growing up in, on the Fort Solanga side of Northport, we spent a lot of my childhood walking down in Northport and, you know, getting ice cream and walking out, way out into that dock as a child. And those are great memories. And that's why we chose to live here, right? We have some of the best that the area has to offer. We have the best school districts.
We have the best neighbors.
And we have great neighbors. And the community is amazing. And so it's just that type of feel that you want when you're looking for an area to grow up. And then it really inspires you to want to protect that type of, that type of neighborhood and type of character of your neighborhood. But by way of background, I was a, I grew up, of course, here in Fort Solanga on the Smithtown side and then graduated Kings Park High School. I went to undergraduate at SUNY Genesee, Upstate New York. Then I went to law school at State University of New York at Buffalo. Then I moved back down to Long Island and I was a prosecutor. So I was assistant district attorney for a couple of years, prosecuted everything from low level offenses and quality of life issues all the way up until some of the most violent and major crimes.
Who was the DA at the time?
It was Dennis Dillon. I was a Nassau DA. Dennis Dillon was the, was the DA. And then after a few years of doing that, I was a vehicular crimes prosecutor. I had national training in alcohol and highway safety. And then I left and I went into private practice, which is what I still do today. I own my own law firm. My partner and I run it. And we do personal injury cases and criminal defense.
Okay, great. All right.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, what have you accomplished in your, it says elected position because I know you also serve as a volunteer for the, the chairperson.
Right. So I'm the chairman of the Conservative Party in Huntington.
I don't know. So it could be related to that too, or your work experience. So let's reword that. What have you accomplished in your positions or work experience that you are the most proud of that directly benefits our community because serving in that way also can benefit our community?
So, and I appreciate that really, right? We can, we can benefit our community by serving lots of different positions and wearing lots of different hats. I'm very proud to be a conservative. I'm very proud to be the chairman of the Conservative Party. I don't, I don't hide that. It's not something that I, that I don't say on purpose. I'm actually proud to be in that position. We have a great group of people and we've got a great party across the island. And we do a lot of great things. So one of the things that I'm really proud of though, in my career as an attorney and as the chairman of the party here in Huntington is, is that I built a reputation, I think, and of course you have to ask people that question. And I always tell people, go ask somebody about me. Just find somebody who you think knows me and go ask. Find a neighbor, find someone from the courthouse. Go walk into the courthouse today. Just walk up to a random person who looks like they work there and say, do you know Greg Grisopoulos? Or what do you know about him? And just randomly ask that question because that's how you'll get to know people. And how I think that benefits me, my position here in running for office and hopefully becoming an elected official as a town councilman is its integrity, its honesty. It's just knowing that you're always going to find someone who is willing to listen, always going to find somebody who keeps an open mind to all the issues. I'm very, very proud of the reputation I've built over 20, almost 23 years of practicing law and being in a courthouse, serving both as a prosecutor and on the other side of things as well, that I've been fair and integrity is important. And as an elected official, you've got to earn trust of people. It makes a big difference because, not to say that people don't trust your government officials, but you don't know all of them. And so on a local level, you may know more than you, than you think, right? Because you get to see us in the supermarket and I go to school. My kids go to school with your kids. But integrity and honesty is really important. And when you go to town board meetings and you have something to say, whether it be good or bad, and usually it's because you're upset with something, you want to know that you're going to get the ear of somebody who is professional, who is listening to you, who's not just giving you lip service, who's not just, you know, in one ear and out the other. I might not agree with you, but I'm keeping an open mind to what you might have to say and I'm going to consider it. And, and I think that's what you really want in any elected official is honesty, integrity, someone who's transparent about what they're thinking. And I think that's important.
Agreed. All right. What do you have to say to disengaged voters who think their vote doesn't matter? And how will you inspire them to get to the polls?
So, local elections are so important. I know, I know you guys are great about saying that and so many of us say that all the time. And what I think is most important about disengaged voters is, and by the way, by and large Huntington, I think, has a very engaged voting pool. A lot of our, a lot of our residents come out and vote. And I think it's because they know, and if those who don't know, which you should know is, you can really make a difference in a local election. And, and really what's important, sometimes on a national level, things take a while to get things done, right? It's a bigger ship. It takes a lot larger motion and longer time to turn the ship. On a local level, it can be really a responsive government. And so if you have the right people there and you have an issue, sometimes the issue can be resolved within 48 hours or 28, four hours. It's really can be very quick if you have the right people in that spot and people who are motivated to really do right by the community. So don't be disengaged. Come out and vote. Learn about your candidates. You know, ask questions about me, learn about me, write me an email and ask me a question because that's how you're going to get to know whether or not I'm someone you can trust. And I think that if you reach out to me and you have a conversation with me, even if you might not be from the same party I'm in, if you might not even know me, I think if you find that you take a few minutes to talk to me, I'm very reasonable and I'm not, I'm not dead set on any one real particular thing. And obviously I have my core values, but there are certain things that I'm happy to talk about and always change my mind and I can be proven wrong.
I found you very respectful when we conversed. We are not the same party.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
Yes, and I vote person, not party. Anyway, but I have a quick question that's not on the list. Don't yell at me. And that is, being a party chair, so you're privy to the voting statistics countywide, right?
Well, voting statistics are actually public information, right? Anybody can get them, but I.
You get the reports and you actually pay attention to them.
I pay attention.
People do the math. So you're saying that our, our town of Huntington, are we, are we one of the higher engaged communities with voting and non-election?
I haven't compared us to other towns, but I can say as a voting community in Huntington, a lot of people come out to vote.
We're very much.
And, and, you know, it has been said that Huntington voters are very intelligent when they're picking their candidates. They really spend the time to get to know the candidates. So. Well, I know why. And I know, and I'm going to give you the plug and we didn't talk about this ahead of time, but you guys do a great job about getting out into the community. And really one of the things, and I'm going to jump around a little bit on some of the, because I know you gave me an idea of what some of the questions might be. But at the end of the day, you guys do a great job of getting out in the community. And transparency in government, transparency in what the town is doing is so important. And Huntington Matters, I mean, the three of you at Huntington Matters did an amazing job about getting out there, live feeding things so the community sees what's going on. And I, I know I saw you the other night and I appreciated it. I couldn't make an event, the deconstruction of the Crippen House. I couldn't make that. I had something going on in the morning that conflicted and I was able to actually watch it live feed and see what was going on. So it, it doesn't take the place for being there. And, you know, I intend to be at many, many things.
Yeah.
But when there's stuff you can't get to, and I know we were together at Assembly of God, at the Faith and, yeah, that, that was a great event. We were painting in the church, a mural. And it was just an awesome community event.
Yeah, Faith and Blue.
Faith and Blue. Even though the town board meetings are publicized and they're, and they're live feed. So there's, there's the ability for everybody to do that. There are so many events around the town, Pink in the Park, that the town can't really always live feed. And you guys kind of fill that, that, that gap. And I think that that really helps people in Huntington know what's going on and see who's there and see who's engaged and see who's, who shows up in election years and who shows up in non-election years. Because really you can't just show up just because you're running. You gotta, you gotta be present all the time.
Right. And what we found, we had a 19% voter turnout in 2014 in the non-election, non-presidential election year, 19% average for the town of Huntington. And now we're in the 30s.
Yeah, I mean.
Which is tremendous. It's only been 11 years.
Bringing, bringing elected officials and bringing candidates to the, to the, to a Facebook feed. This is the way the, not just the future, but communication. So it's great. And I thank, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that. All right. So if you could, magic wand. If you could guarantee to get exactly what you want right away, what is something you would fix or improve in the town of Huntington? And what is something you never want to make changes to?
Okay, so I always, my knee jerk reaction is always talk about communication because communication is the number one solution to some things where people don't necessarily understand what's going on, right? So if there's, if there's an event or there's development or there's construction going on somewhere, people don't know about it until they drive by it. And then they get home and they ask, well, what's going on on, you know, on Park Avenue or what's going on, you know, on Route 110? I think that's, that's a great, a great area that I would really want to focus on. We spend a lot of time in the town on working on, I say we, but, but obviously elected officials who are doing it now spend a lot of time talking about, like when there's a snow event or when schools are closed or when there's a road closure. And those are great. And you can't inundate people with information, but emails aren't always the greatest. And so sometimes I think, I think we really need to have almost like a live Facebook page for the town of Huntington where you can jump on and give a quick video. Text messaging is a great thing, right? We do that during elections. We send out text messages to remind people, hey, there's an election. Come vote for me. Or we knock on doors and during the election for me to get out, introduce myself and find out what's going on with the community. I think after the election's over, I'm going to still be knocking on doors asking people in Melville like I've been doing now. What do you, what do you want to see happen with Melville? Imagine you had that magic wand. What would you want Melville to look like? Forget about what's already in the system, what's already in play. What do you want to see there? And we can try to incorporate those things. So communication. And if I could steal a second, a close second, I'd love to fix parking in a town. And I mean, in Huntington, that's, well, and I, and. So that's right, spoiler alert. Parking is such a difficult thing in the town and I know it. There are times that I, I use the app. I like the app. I could tell you on my phone, if I pulled it out right now, there's probably four different parking apps. Because depending on where I'm at, some, some towns have different apps. We have Passport. Some towns have Flowbird. There's, there's lots of different apps. I like the app. I think it's helpful. But I think that you need to kind of have both. No, and we've talked about, about the app before. I think you need a combination of those things. I know some of our elderly seniors in the community don't have either a smartphone or the ability to use the app. I think you need some kiosks, not meters, but kiosks in strategic places where you can go up and you can pay directly to that. You punch in your, your license plate and it, it works the same as the app if you don't have the app. And then of course, there's a sign that tells you where, where to park and how to use the app. But parking has always been a, been a challenge. I think parking has been the casualty of overdevelopment in the village of Huntington because prior administrations have sold out parking, public parking for private parking. And so now there's no place to park when people want to come to visit the village and get ice cream or go to a restaurant and park at night or, you know, go to see a show at the Paramount. And it's frustrating for me. I drive up into the village and it sometimes takes you 20 minutes, which.
Okay. I just must not go out during peak times.
Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays without, with kids, without, with kids.
Eight or nine. I mean, we go to dinner at night. Okay, you have to drive around for 10 minutes, but I don't ever have a problem.
With kids, I don't go out as much as I used to, but, but when you do, it's a little tricky to find parking. But I think there's creative ways to resolve some of those parking issues. I'm not a fan of a parking garage. And I know that's a, that's always been a topic. I don't think a parking garage is the quick fix to that. So I've been asked before about parking garages. I don't like a parking garage. I think a parking garage solves or tries to solve the parking problem, but creates a whole host of other issues. And by the way, the last thing we need in the village of Huntington is another large concrete structure of either multiple stories or whatever. It's just even within the current town code, we don't need any more of that. There's enough large structures in the village. I think there's creative ways to address the ability to help our businesses and our local businesses have people come up here, park and not be frustrated with the parking that they go bring their business someplace else. And I think if you, if you address the parking issue responsibly and with an eye towards trying to, to think outside the box, you can solve a lot of those problems. And that, I think, may help invigorate some of our downtown businesses and restaurants that may be having trouble, you know, staying afloat.
I write down my ideas. We'll be here. We'll talk later.
Yeah, that's great. Make a list, please, because we're going to talk later.
Okay.
I make a list every day I walk.
All right, housing and development. This is a huge one. You know this. Number one question we get asked, and that is, what can the candidates do to bring in more workforce and actually affordable housing for our graduates and seniors? How do you plan to encourage developers to build for this underserved group? And the caveat is, this is not the affordable housing formula that we're talking about.
Right.
This is because there's a ton of people that can't even afford the affordable housing formula. So that's the question.
I know. And that's, that's always the balance, right? And so we need to, as a community and as a town, we really need to try to make sure that we are, sorry, I didn't turn my phone off and now I'm buzzing and it's okay. But nevertheless, it's a balance we need to try to strike because we don't want to lose our young people. We spend a lot of money on educating our kids and we have great schools. We spend a lot of our tax money, most of our tax money on education because we have awesome schools. And then our kids move away. I was fortunate enough to move back home. My sister doesn't live here. She lives in Arizona. So, I mean, just to give you an example, you know, a lot of, I think we need to make an effort to keep a lot of our young people here. And doing that, in doing that, we need to create some type of housing for them. Entry level housing that allows them. Now, that doesn't mean large scale. And I'm a big fan of defining what the terms mean because I'll say we need to create housing for young people and someone will interpret that to mean something it's not. And so I'm a big fan of if we're going to define something, let's define it. So I'm, I'm very much against overdevelopment. I'm also against no development. I think you need to find that sweet spot of redeveloping areas in a strategic and smart way to address keeping our young people here, making those locations affordable for them and also creating locations for our seniors for them to move into that type, same type of housing.
Yeah.
And maybe that recycles the, the housing stock, right? Because then they move into, they, they're downgrading. They're able to stay in the neighborhood and not moving to Florida or down to North Carolina. They're staying local and then their house comes up on the market. And then the young person who initially was in one of those younger houses then now starts to, to move on and starts to upgrade their size of their family and they need more space and then they move out. But I'm a big proponent of.
That's why we need all types of housing.
You need, you need, you need a diverse housing stock, a little bit of everything for everybody. And too much is a bad thing. Too little is a bad thing. And, and listen, there are some places in the town that can't have it. And there are some places that would really benefit from, from having it. And it's finding those locations, working with your community and your civic leaders and people who are boots on the ground in those locations and determining what's best for each neighborhood and what's best for them. But we have to be creative about it or we're going to lose all our people. And then, and then we have nobody here. And then. Exactly. The next thing, that's the domino effect that we try to avoid is losing businesses. Then we've got vacant buildings and then what do we do with it? And if we don't get ahead of it, we'll be behind the eight ball. We don't, we want to be ahead of it all.
All right. All the candidates have stated that they're against developing, but all have also stated that they're in favor of pre- eating housing for seniors and young adults. We may have already answered this.
Right.
Who can't afford to stay in Huntington, what is your plan to accommodate both interest groups? I think we already answered it.
Yeah, and that's that housing stock question. Yeah.
Melville Town Center, his neighborhood. Now that developers will, are submitting their plans, we have one already submitted for the Melville Town Center. How do you plan to keep the hearings for each project fair and above reproach?
So I, that's, I think that's very simple, actually. The way you keep all the hearings fair and above reproach is you do them in the public, which I think is what the town has done already. They had three public hearings and without even suggesting it, because I would have suggested it, they had a hearing down in Melville, right?
Yes.
And I think accessibility is also important because nothing takes the place of an in-person meeting. You want to have those meetings broadcast, but when you're broadcasting, you can't really, I don't think you can call in a question. I think you have to be live to have a question asked. I might look to try to change that so you can submit an online question and somebody from the town is taking the question from a resident and asking it, you know, caller called in and wants to know this. It brings more, I think transparency is not the problem. It's, it's more access. So you have meetings, you have the town, the town board meetings. They're open on a, on a, on a project of this scale, you're going to need more than just one town board meeting. One, one open meeting. And I'm sure that they will. And if I'm on the town board, I would a hundred percent be on board and pushing for as many as we can have to make sure that the community, every community aspect is addressed. It might mean having two more down at Half Hollow Hills East like we had the last one. And that meeting was so large, we filled the whole auditorium. Sometimes that's an indication, A, of. It was great. And, but that's what you want. You want community engagement because it's important that you have the community there to ask questions. Because I think it's about trust again, right? You want to, you want to trust that you're, that the, that the people that you elect are going to do right by your community. And I've always been a proponent that we, if I'm elected and that we as town board members and elected officials have an obligation and responsibility to keep the property that you purchased, the location and the character substantially the same as the way you bought it, when you bought it. And so, you know, we're not going to change your backyard. If you're on two acre housing, I'm not a fan of, of, of large scale, you know, sheer numbers of apartments in that, in locations like that. I'm not going to put them up against other, other houses. I'm really much more focused on neighborhoods that can handle that. The Melville Town Center is a great area. It's south of the LIE. It's not really near any residents. I happen to live very close to that and I, my neighbors all love the idea of it. And one of the things.
Just condos. No. Yeah, there's something there, but it's, but I think it is over a quarter mile away.
Yeah.
That's what they said last night, right?
That whole location of Melville Town Center is all, it's all, it's all buildings and commercial. It's, and what's interesting is when the Melville Town Center, I really more look at it as a village. Melville really needs a village. Dix Hills really needs a village.
I love what you said about the.
Coal Spring Harbor?
Yeah, and not the, your kids and the.
The, the parade. So Coal Spring Harbor is really what, what rang it for me. The Coal Spring Harbor School District, their, their sports teams had a parade of heroes. Basically, they celebrated the fact that the Coal Spring Harbor School District and their, some of the teams, so one of the teams won. And they had a parade. They closed a section of Coal Spring Harbor and they had a march. And everybody walks down and everybody cheered. It was a great community bonding event. Everybody spills out into the park afterwards and, and they kind of acknowledged everybody and recognized people. And they, they had like light lunch. It was an awesome, awesome feeling. And I remember being there, so fortunate to be invited, thinking Half Hollow Hills Boys Lacrosse won state championships. That's literally that same year. So I called one of my friends whose son was on the team and I said, where's our parade? And, and they were like, where are we going to have it? Like, we're going to close down Route 110. It's a state roadway. Like the state's not going to do that for us. And I think, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our kids want to, like, you know, I have a daughter in high school. They want to go drop off at the mall on Friday nights and walk around. And they're good kids and it's, it's a safe mall. We're so fortunate to have that. And the village is kind of too far for me to drop off my, my, my high school daughter. I mean, we would do it, but I would, I would probably be walking around two blocks away watching them.
It's a bit of debauchery.
And it's, and it's, it's safe, but I just, it's too far in case you need to, for me to come back. So it would be great if Dix Hills and Melville had that location, something where you could do community events like that, where you could have, you know, holiday events and you could have, you know, time to spend with your family in the parks and have one of those mini parades. You can close down a portion of a main street in the village of the Melville Town Center and walk and march and kind of recognize and do the community stuff that, you know, quaint villages like that really should have.
Even with the meeting, you could go this way and then turn around and come back the other way.
There's so much to offer. If you do it right, but you know what, to me, that's me knowing what my community needs and wants. And, you know, my, my friends and I, if we go to dinner, we're, we can go out in Melville. We've got great restaurants there. We got Huntington. We've got, but then we'll go to Roslyn. We'll go to Farmingdale. Like they're, they're great. There are a lot of great places that, it is big, but there's great restaurants there. And so it's a bit of a stretch, but we'll go, you know, we'll go down to Babylon. We'll go to Farmingdale. There's so many places that have great things to offer. I think Melville really could use that. But we have to do it right, right?
And you're in between from them coming there, there and boom.
It could be a destination.
It could be a destination.
It is. And this, it's a good, it's a good spot right off the park, right off the, the LIE, right off the Route 110. As long as it doesn't affect traffic, it doesn't affect it. I'm going to want to, I'm a very much by the book guy. I'm going to want to see all those studies. I'm going to want to make sure that our water quality is not going to be affected, that our schools are not going to be negatively affected, that our traffic is not going to be overwhelming and that it's in control, that it's checked the right way. And I'm going to be very critical of any studies that are submitted about Melville Town Center to make sure that we do it right. Because we can do it and we can do it right. We just got to keep our eye on the ball. And I think the town board's doing a great job of that, but I intend to be that, that, that extra hawk eye on that and I'm not going to miss a thing.
Great. Okay. All right. Residents frequently express frustration with the responsiveness of the town, particularly regarding illegal housing, illegal apartments and rundown properties. What specific changes would you implement to make the town more productive, efficient and effective in addressing violations?
So I think that's more of a two-fold response because one, I think if you address housing options, if you create housing stock in areas and you're smart about it, you're not overwhelming in a community with, with smart housing options, then you'll address some of the illegal housing issues. Because then people won't be drawn to illegal housing or renting basement apartments that might be dangerous or attic apartments, which are also dangerous. They'll move towards actual housing that's legitimate, that's, that's affordable for them to live in and to be able to be in the community. And then the other issue is, of course, addressing the illegal ones that are out there that are dangerous. The town is not, is not a, is not out, you know, scouring neighborhoods, looking for illegal housing. That's just not the way I think the town operates. Most of the, the times I think when the town finds out about illegal housing, it's either because there's a fire and the fire department was there and there is an issue and it's a safety issue, the town becomes involved, or during the process of some type of other issue. There, the neighbor's doing a pool and they happen to notice this, there's, you know, multiple cars in a location. And of course, people can call if they think there's an illegal house or illegal apartment. I know that the town has addressed some of those accessory dwelling apartment issues. But again, you know, I, I, I think that if you, if you create housing stock in areas that don't overwhelm the community. But again, you know, I, I, I think that if you, if you create housing stock in areas that don't overwhelm the community, that are done in a smart way, um, and it's limited, it's not, it's not large scale housing, it's not, it's not overdevelopment. It's gotta be just right. Then I think you'll address some of the, some of the illegal stuff. You'll lose the drive for people to want to put people in those illegal apartments because they'll find other places and they'll, they'll kind of eliminate as a, as an organic result of having. Right.
And now there's less demand because there's more supply of the.
Right. But listen, if you've got, if you've got a dangerous condition in a basement, there's a fire and you've got, you know, multiple people living in basements with elect, with, with cords and things like that. And I've talked to fire department officials over the years about those and it's just not safe. So it's, it, yes, it address, it may address a housing issue, issue for someone, but it's not a safe place for them to live. So that doesn't, it, it's like, it's solving one problem while creating another. It's like the parking garage in my opinion, right? It solves one problem, creates another. And sometimes the other problems are worse than what you started with in the beginning. So, you know, there is no one size fits all approach for all of that. But I think if you can, can identify areas that are ripe for building and redeveloping and you do it in a smart way, we can address a lot of those issues. And that's kind of the proactive way is, is doing it ahead of time before we have problems and we have people, you know, who are getting hurt or, or injured in illegal apartments.
All right. How would you, this one we touched on also, but how would you take advantage of technology and new communication strategies to increase transparency in town government and make it easier for busy residents to stay informed and participate in the decision-making process?
So I know that all the, the council members have Facebook pages. I know that they all broadcast things. I think that you guys do a great job. So it's a, it's a, it's a combination of doing stuff on our own, doing videos, right? I would probably do, I would almost have my, my weekly video. Hey, this is what's up this week. You know, if you're a town resident, I, I would love to. And you got, I would, I would probably do it again with you guys and we're in conjunction with you guys. But, but my goal would really be to, hey, this is what's on, this is what's in the hopper for the town of Huntington this week. We've got Fall Festival on the weekend. We've got, you know, Pink in the Park on Sunday. We've got this event, this event. Come on down and enjoy what, what Huntington has to offer. You know, telling people, by the way, we've got heart buses that are doing this, that can transport you from A to B. Because I think people forget that we're one of the few towns that has our own bus service. And we can really optimize that bus service and use it. I didn't.
Oh, I did.
I didn't, did you?
Well, my meme, I said, we're all over that thing.
It's, it's a great way to move, to move people around in a, in a, in a really efficient manner if people know about it. And we gotta do better about that. I think using Facebook and Instagram and videos instead of emails or, you know, instead of the, a blurb, but people don't really read it when they see it posted. Instead of posting the letter, just do a quick video. So.
Like it. Okay. So, um, we, well, we've got the 10, but we have a little more time because we three will, yeah, we have a little bit more time. We give you like eight. It's a commodity.
It is. I'll take as much.
Look what I have to do with these girls.
I'll stay all day. I'll stay all day. It's Friday and as long as, as long as you guys are, are here, I'm here.
Our next one is two, but, um, all right. So there's, there's, uh, five questions here that we didn't touch on. Is there one that really speaks to you that you would like to talk about now?
I love the open space infrastructure question. Open space and land and improvement is such an important thing. So I, I think we need to make sure that we preserve the character and charm of Huntington, right? Many people chose to live here. One, well, some people like to live here because they've lived here their whole life. And then we have people who choose to live here and move into Huntington because they love what Huntington has to offer. And I think one of those, one of the big factors that people choose to live in Huntington for is because it has that, that New England, you know, charm. It has that, that feel of a suburban town. And I think we need to do everything we can to kind of preserve that and to make sure that we have more open space. So any portion of development, any redevelopment plans, I think should be, should have some level of green space. And I know that's part of the Melville project that brings me a little bit back is we'll probably have more green space there. And we will have more green space in Melville in that area than there is now as a result of the redevelopment. And that's, I think we always be thinking that.
Yeah.
The town needs to be.
They bring that, some of that to Huntington Station when they redevelop after the stayaway.
And I think so too. When we, you talk about some of those areas and that, that kind of brings me to Conti Center, which I love. And I know, I know that's, I know it's not mine, but I know it's important to so many people because I've been, I've been out there knocking on doors and I've been asking people about what's important to them in their community. I would love to see Conti Center built. I would love to see an area, you know, a building dedicated to having our youth come out and, and hang out and where town board members can go down there and play basketball and, and, you know, get, get, get the court run on them by, by, by kids who are awesome. It's just community engagement. It's, it's having local places like the Conti Center in every community, places like green space where you can go and hang out with your kids, sit and have, have a picnic, grab ice cream and sit down on a, on a, on a park bench and enjoy being out in suburban lifestyle.
What do you think of my idea? Did you hear it in that interview? Community benefits agreement.
Yeah. So I think we have to think out of.
Right. For the new developments coming in down to Searl Line, Huntington Station, and that money would go towards this community center.
Right. So you do have private partnerships with, yeah, I think.
Because they did it with Gateway to benefit the school district when they brought in the larger apartment.
That's thinking outside the box, right?
Yeah.
We have, we have a budget for something. Obviously it was, that, that budget is a lot different now than what it would have been had it been built when the budget first came in. So how do we, how do we, how do we make up the difference? How do we, how do we get the project completed? And finish it because it's a great project for the community. So how do we do that? And so we, we have to figure out how to partner with, with people.
And I actually do forgot, but I have one more specific to you question.
Yes.
What's this deal about you being a judge?
So.
What is this?
So I'm not a judge. I'm a, currently I'm a hearing officer, by the way. But I was an administrative law judge for the town of Huntington. When we first created in the town of Huntington, the, the board of, uh, the Bureau of Administrative Adjudications.
During Chad.
During Chad's, Chad Lupinacci's administration, we, the town, no, it's still, no, it's still in existence. It's, it's actually a great program because really what it does is it allows code violations to be held, to be handled within the town of Huntington. Instead of going to district court and being handled over there in the courthouse. It's a different courthouse. A lot of the towns have been moving towards that because it helps create some of those issues and helps residents figure out how to fix a problem without this. Like the court can't give advice, but the town building department can. They can say, hey, listen, this is a violation. This is how you fix it. And we can try to help that. So I think it helps the residents by keeping it in a smaller, in a smaller location. So I was, I was appointed when they first created BAA in a mask. Um, we were appointed and sworn in during COVID. And I was appointed to be an appellate administrative law judge, which means I would, if a person appealed the decision by the chief judge, it would come to me and two other administrative law judges to make a decision if the, if the, if the, if the judge who presided either made an error in law or in fact or otherwise.
Okay.
Uh, and so I served in that capacity. I helped set up a lot of the forums, um, to help individuals file appeals if they wanted to. And then there was a, um, a change by the town board that you could not be involved in politics. At the time, I was not the chairman of the conservative party, but I was a, I was involved in the party and I had positions within the party. And the, when the rule passed, they said, effective this date, you could no longer get to choose whether you wanted to stay as an ALJ or be in the party, resign one of them. And I chose to leave as an administrative law judge and stay in my position with the party. I'm a by the book guy. And the second that that passed, I may not have agreed with it, but I'm a hundred percent gonna follow it. And so I resigned from that position. And then months later, I was appointed as an outside contractor to be a hearing officer, which means I sit in traffic hearings. So if you have a traffic ticket to get in the village, you would come in front of me or one of the other hearing officers. There was no bar. And not a judge, we're hearing officers. We don't work for the town. You don't have a town ID card. You don't have any special benefits. And the, the purpose was so that I could decide whether or not the town met its burden or whether they didn't meet the burden. And I probably dismissed more tickets than the town probably would have appreciated. But my feeling was to be.
You have a unique knowledge of the parking and traffic situation.
I do. And I've heard a lot of the complaints and I, I think that's, as far as jumping back to the first question, we come right back to the beginning. I really think that in that position, it helped me listen to people and talk about their frustrations with parking, train stations and not finding spots and, you know, being late for the reservations or gonna miss the train. And so to me, that was important and there was no bar on political activity by being a hearing officer. And like I said, I, I literally.
And now we have the correct information.
Yeah.
And you want to have the correct information.
It's, it's a do your research, right?
Offer it to the community.
I am a by the book guy and I, there's no way I'm, I'm not gonna follow what the town code requires me to do.
That's the answer to the judge.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Grisopoulos, this is Greg Grisopoulos. He is running for Huntington Town Council. Election day is November 4th. In person, early voting starts October 25th, goes through November 2nd. You can do that at Dix Hills Fire Department or the Huntington Public Library Station branch in Huntington Station. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
It was great chatting.
My pleasure.
Good luck.
Thanks, everybody at home watching as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.